All right, good evening. We'll call the meeting to order for the September 12th, 2024 Apple Valley City Council meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone, and before we get started, as your name is called or as your item comes up, please approach the podium to address the council. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask all of us to rise and join the council on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda, and Tom, do we have any changes or additions?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We do not have any changes tonight.
All right, we will take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Motion from Councilmember Grendal, a second from Councilmember Melander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passes. The next item on our agenda is the audience participation portion for the meeting. This is for items not on the regular agenda, and we do have a total of 10 minutes for this item. We have two people who have signed up to speak. The first is John Retschel, and John, would you like to come up?
Good evening, Mayor Hoopaw and councilmembers. My name is John Retschel. I live at 13835 Lake Staff Avenue, Apple Valley. A couple of points I want to make, but then I want to ask a question for you guys just to answer along the budget process here, just so people can understand it. First of all, my background for people that are watching, I did work with city staff for many years. I retired from the city of Apple Valley, and I want you to know, first of all, I appreciate the job you all do with city staff and the council and the budget process. It's very thorough. People have no idea how much work goes into that and how much scrutiny it all falls under. But with that, I suspect there's going to be some changes coming, because you just take a look around with all the inflation that's going on, you just can't control the expenses. So unfortunately, I'm sure costs have gone up for this city. And I mean, the headlines are saying, now too, though, that we've been seeing this for the last couple of years, the state's been sitting on a big surplus. And this is going to bring me to my question, and I think Councilman Goodwin and probably Ron Hedberg, our finance director, can be the best ones to answer this in the presentation later, just with LGA regarding aid to the cities. Now, I know Apple Valley, I think the last time we had received it was like 2006, maybe it was earlier than that.
Right.
But there are millions of dollars that get dolled out every year to a bunch of cities around this state. Apple Valley, unfortunately, is one of the suburbs that doesn't get a dime, and it's not fair. And now we're going to be, I know we're going to be seeing our taxes going up because the costs of everything have gone up so much. I'm just wondering where we're at with that. Have we heard anything from the state? Have our reps done anything to represent us and try and get us a slice of the pie back? So that'd be the question, if you guys can answer that in the process, and if Ron or somebody can try and explain how that all works, that'd be even better, because it's a tough one to understand. But regardless of what happens in this budget process, I appreciate your scrutiny you've given to it, and I just want you to know that I want to maintain the standard of living we have here in Apple Valley, even if it does have to cost us a little bit more. I appreciate having quality streets, nice parks, and a safe environment. So let's maintain that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we can talk about the budget-related LGA and other questions there, and I think our city administrator could even give us a little update on some of the attempts we made at the legislature this year to start that conversation up again as well. So, thank you, John. Next one on our list is Diane McCrawley. Did I say that correctly?
McCrawley.
McCrawley, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate you letting me speak tonight. The reason that I asked to be able to speak is we moved here in January, and we've only been here six months, and we finally found a house after a year of looking in Apple Valley. Our dream come true. Everything was going great until the spring, and our neighbor plays his music very loud, so loud that the bass is felt into our house. We have called police officers, and they go over there, and somebody has a scanner, and they're tipped off, so they turn it down before they get there. We contacted city council, and we were contacted by Sarell Topelson, and we were told that 917 Redwell, where the house plays the noise disturbance, that if they continued this, they would be fined. Then we were told that we needed to call 911. We have called 911 at least six to 12 times. I requested a report. I filled out a data release, and I will get that for you if you'd like that. My question to you is, what are my rights as a homeowner? What can be done? I like loud music probably more than other people, but I put headphones on. And I just wonder, what is the disturbance of the piece policy, and how can we get this rectified and solved?
Yep. Thanks for the comments. We can't solve all the issues here tonight, right? We're here to take the feedback, but you're doing the correct thing, right? The correct thing is to call 911. They do need to witness it in order to issue any kind of citation.
Okay.
So that's what you will need to do to get there. We can't be there all the time, right?
I understand. I understand.
So that's the action I would ask that you take, is when you're witnessing, call as soon as you can so that they can dispatch and get out there.
Okay. I just want to know if, you know, if this is something that Apple Valley tolerates or if this is something that is not tolerated.
We have noise ordinances, and those are what you are calling on.
Okay.
I have also looked at the call logs and the complaints. We are not registering any other complaints from anyone else in the neighborhood on those.
And I know that there's, you know, other elderly, and I know that they're vulnerable, and, you know, and, you know, with today's, you know, people, you know, it's intimidating to go talk to somebody because you never know what the retributions are, you know?
And that's why you're doing the right thing. We would always rather have someone call and have us dispatch and have someone come out than to have someone confront a neighbor or confront someone else, right? Whether, because you don't know who you have, right? I don't think your neighbors are dangerous, but you don't know that.
No, no, I don't either. Okay, we will just continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I didn't see your light. I apologize.
So you're aware that they have a scanner, and you're saying that they know when the police are coming?
Yes, because it-
How do you know they have a scanner?
Because it drops from as soon as I call the police officer, 10 minutes to the time that they get there. And I can hear the officer from my house. The music goes down, and then when the officer leaves, it goes back up. So somebody has a scanner. You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Bergman, excuse me.
Yeah, thanks. And one comment to you, and then I'll ask staff about the other comment that I'd like to make. When you call Dakota 911, in your case, when you call, and this is the proper way to do it, say this is a non-emergency, so that way they know. So you follow that? That's fantastic. They appreciate that a lot. I guess for staff, either Nick or for staff, is a lot of times things are based on, because I work in a noise environment, on decibels. So does this meet any criteria? Does anything around this particular resident that this person is talking about, does it meet a decibel level that's bad? For example, you can get really loud cars, as we all know, or whatever. Does this exceed any of those decibels?
Oh, oh, yes. It's on now.
Hello.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so for our amplified music ordinance, it comes down to feet, so it's not a decibel level. It's number of feet away. So during daytime hours between 7:00 AM and 10:30 PM, it's 100 feet, and then overnight hours, it's down to 50 feet.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, 50, 50, okay, 100 feet. And to, let's say I live next to that person, that if my house is 100 feet or less, that's where you're going to do it. But how about somebody that lives a block or two blocks away? Is that, are you still playing into that? No, because you wouldn't hear that a lot.
And the calls we've gone to, the officers have gone to the residents in front of the residents on the street within that 50 or 100 feet and listened.
Right.
Can't hear-
Nothing.
Can't hear anything audible, like obviously loud music, and certainly not a violation of the ordinance when they get there.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our consent agenda, and these items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or citizen requests to pull an item. And council members, are there any items you'd like to pull from consent? All right, citizens, any items to pull? Seeing none, we would take a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendal, a second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent items all carry. We'll move on to our regular agenda, and we'll start with item 5A, which is our Family Aquatic Center Improvement Project Update, and Eric is going to take us through this one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this evening we're requesting that you approve a guaranteed maximum contract with Terra Construction for the construction of the Aquatic Center improvements, and I'll just walk through those right now so that the public knows what we're planning to do. And so this is the project team from the city staff that have been working on this project with our architect and with our contractor, Terra Construction. The Apple Valley Family Aquatic Center is an $8.2 million project. We had planned to spend about 80% of that, or $6.5 million, towards the actual construction, and about 20% of that, or $1.6 million, towards the soft costs of the project. Rounding the numbers, this is kind of where we're at, so we were exactly where we expected to be when we started this project with regards to how the budget is laying out. As a part of the project, we're planning to rebrand and re-theme the aquatic center from the Apple Valley Family Aquatic Center to Splash Valley Water Park. And so throughout the water park, we'll be introducing the brand of Splash Valley and an otter on our signage, on some of our play features. We'll be putting together birthday packages around that theme and just doing whatever we can to create a new theme and a new brand for the facility so that when people come to it in the summer of 2025, it'll have, it'll look new, and we'll be referring to it and marketing it, marketing it as Splash Valley Water Park. As part of the improvement project, the facility was originally constructed about 25 years ago, and so we will be updating things across the facility to make them more ADA compliant and inclusive for folks that may have a disability. We'll be improving concrete slopes and approaches, Dora hardware, the showers. We'll be adding an adult changing station, the pool entrance and exit. We'll be adding an entrance and an exit with a handrail, making sure that our signage meets the ADA code. Right now, none of our signage is Braille, has Braille on it, and so our new signage will. And all of this has been reviewed by one, by an ADA consultant that specializes in these types of code issues. We'll be making landscape improvements to the entire facility. We'll be dressing up the front of the facility so that as you drive up, it'll be an improved look. We'll be improving the landscaping on the lazy river and then throughout the water park itself. From the pool improvement perspective, replastering both of the pools, gel coating all of the slides to make them look new again and last another 25-plus years. We'll be updating the pool gutters, the stair slides, and the landings to those facilities as well. When it comes to the concession stand, we'll be adding some shade out front of the concession stand so that if you happen to be standing in line, instead of standing in the hot sun, you'll be able to stand in a little bit of shade. You won't be standing on hot concrete. We'll be making some service window improvements, layouts with inside the concession stand itself so that hopefully we can do a better job of serving customers a little bit faster, doing some equipment updates and HVAC upgrades to the concession stand for the staff that has to work in it. One of the items that was highly requested was additional shade at the aquatic center, so we'll be adding shade throughout. And it's a little light on the screen, but the shaded shapes that you can see on the screen are where additional shade is going to go. We will be installing some emergency gates. The red arrows on the perimeter of the site are emergency gates that will be added to the fence line so that if there's ever an emergency or an accident, and it causes us to have to have people leave the facility in a hurry, and maybe not in a place where the accident or the issue is happening, there's other ways to get out of the facility than just through the front gate, which is really the only spot for folks to get out right now. You'll notice on the screen, on the, in the middle of the facility, there's a black line with the yellow arrows. We had thought about putting a fence through the middle of it, separating the zero-def entry pool from the lazy river in a way that we would be able to not have both of them open at the same time and allowing the facility to be a little bit more cost-effective to rent out, but the cost of the fence doesn't really allow us to make enough, we can't make enough money to really justify the cost of the fence, so we're not going to move forward with that. We'll be updating mechanical systems, and maybe the one to point out the most is we'll be replacing the pool filters to both facilities. We'll be going from a sand-based filter to a regenerative media-based filter, which requires us to do less backwashing, which means we will get to use less water. We should be saving about 790,000 gallons of water every year, about, so about 25% of the water that we use also means that we're going to use a little less electricity for that, so saving about 21,000 kilowatt-hours annually. We should save about $11,000 with the upgraded filters. And again, those filters are 25 years old, so they're really at the end of their useful life. We're replacing boilers, other HVAC equipment throughout the facility, plumbing and electrical upgrades to meet current codes, and do some bathhouse improvements. And along those lines, we'll be updating the family changing rooms, which are kind of at the front of the facility, making them handicap accessible, again, adding that adult changing station for, so that if an adult comes that has special needs, there's a place for them to be able to take care of their needs and the people that help support that individual. Again, plumbing upgrades and admission improvements, or improvements to the admissions area to try to get, when we open up in the morning or the early afternoon, there's always a long line out the front door. So we're doing everything we can to get people through the gate as quickly as possible, because everyone's excited to get to the pool, and they don't want to stand in line. We are going to be adding a little bit of solar power. The facility's open for 60 to 70 days a year, so it's hard to justify spending a lot of money on solar, but we are spending a little bit of money on introducing rooftop solar to the facility, and that's on the, that'll be on the bathhouse and on the concession stand. And it'll, it'll be enough power to run some of the lights and one of our HVAC units at the facility. So we are making an effort to be a little bit more friendly when it comes to the environment and using solar power. From a construction schedule standpoint, tonight, we're asking the council to approve the guaranteed maximum price contract with Terra for just over $6.7 million. And once that's approved, they'll sign contracts with all of their vendors that they received bids from. Construction would start in September of '24. It'll go through the winter and into the spring of '25, and we hope to open up in June of '25 like we normally would, only with a rebranded, remarketed facility as Splash Valley Water Park and a lot of new improvements to the facility itself. I think that's it. I can stand and answer any questions that the council may have.
Council have questions? I know we've seen this a handful of times in a couple settings, so if there's not a lot of questions for those watching, it's not that we aren't paying attention, it's that we've seen it four times now probably in different settings. So, Councilman Goodwin's going to prove me wrong and ask a question, though.
Well, I'm not. I'm just going to say the new, the new name of it, Splash Valley's kind of cute. It's got a, got a, got a nice look to it. So we got a, what is that?
That's an otter.
Otter? Flashing.
Yep.
We're going to name him Tom.
I'm the otter.
We'll all know it as Splash Valley.
Looks like you retired.
I like it. It's a very clever name. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the support.
You know, there's been a ton of chances for input. You've sent mailings out, there's been website things. It never seems to fail that after this gets going, somebody writes us an email and says, what the heck, where did this come from? So it amazes me, lest somebody should be watching tonight and think that this is being done behind closed doors or ramrodded through. There's been more than ample opportunity for input on this thing, and all of these improvements have been carefully thought out and planned, and the work that's gone into this, and you in particular, that we've put into it, and your staff, has been remarkable to develop a first-class water recreation facility, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, we've gotten great, great first 25 years out of the facility we have, too, so.
It's been very populous.
Yep. All right, if there's no other questions, we are looking for a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price-
So move.
Amendment.
Second.
With motion from Councilmember Goodwin and a second from Councilmember Bergman, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries. Thank you, Eric. Ron has our next item, which is our proposed 2025 city budget and property tax levy, and Ron, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There we are. As the mayor mentioned, we'll be talking about the preliminary budget and tax levy for the coming year, 2025. One thing to keep in mind, when we set the levy this evening, that becomes the maximum levy. It can be reduced anytime between now and the end of the year when we certify the final levy to the county auditor. Tonight's schedule, we'll look at some of the overview, general overview, high-level overview of some of the significant impacts, some of the changes presented in this year's budget. We'll talk about one change since the August 22nd informal meeting is there is an updated resolution that was included in your packet. It does apply $254,121 of the bond premium that was received when we sold the 2024 A general abrogation bonds. And the reason for that is the premium resulted in a levy for 2025 that was higher than what we were including in the earlier drafts. So this brings, keeps it at the level that we were looking at back in early the summer. So in an effort to mitigate the increase to the, to the property taxpayer. We'll talk about some of the significant budget items of note, and we'll talk about some of the valuation changes in tax impacts and some changes in the market value homestead, market value exclusion program, which this year there were some significant changes to that that'll benefit a number of, a number of our residents. The action, formal action this evening is one to adopt the preliminary budget and levy that sets the maximum levy again. As I mentioned, can be lowered at any time through the end of the year, but not increased. The other action yet included in here is to set a date to discuss the budget and levy where the public is invited to attend. We used to call that the truth and taxation hearing. It's now just the budget meeting is the, the state title for that. We are recommending that that meeting can be held on a regular scheduled city council date. We're recommending December 12th. It does provide the city council, if the city council cannot take action, finish that evening on December 12th. It provides a backup date to December 26th to finish the budget and levy adoption for taxes payable 2025. The budget timeline, really, the staff budget is, starts with the city council goal-setting session in the, in the spring, but the staff starts working on it in May through early August. We, this year, distributed the preliminary draft to the city council on August 8th, held a budget workshop on August 22nd. We had scheduled at that time this evening's meeting to adopt the preliminary levy and budget. The other piece we need to do is by the end of September is notify the city council, the county auditor of the city council meeting date to discuss the budget and levy where the public is invited to attend. Budget process, again, begins each year with the annual city council goal-setting session in the spring of each year, sets the goals for the coming year. At that time, we typically have the preliminary values received from the county for the estimated valuations for the following year. We can take that and estimate an impact to the median value home, and throughout the whole budget process, that becomes, I'll say, the taxable, the target maximum impact for the budget set in process. We don't always meet that, but that, that is kind of our overall target as we go through the process. We then, following the city council goal-setting, we provide direction to the departments, of course, to meet the city council goals, but then to, as they prepare their department budget requests, both revenues and expenses should be considered in addressing the goals. Budget impact should be within the levy impact goals that I mentioned. Expenses should be realistic and based on projected costs if they are anticipated. New programs, of course, that would be in there as an additional cost, but there would be offsetting revenue expected. Prior expenses should be reviewed and compared to the prior year actuals, of course. That is what staff does when they prepare the budget request, and then administration, finance, and the departments sit and review those over a one or, one or one and a half week period in June and July, and we go through a similar exercise comparing to the prior year actuals and talking about the additional programs that may be happening. Revenues should be projected at realistic levels and related to the cost to provide the service. So for example, if costs are increasing 8%, the expectation would be fees and charges should also be increasing at or about that same, same rate, if not more. This year, the, the, once the department submits the requests, administration, finance, review the budget requests, we compile it all and put it into the, one system, into one document. At the end of that, the city, an administrative recommended budget is presented to the city council, which we, we did back in, on August 22nd. And just an overview of the, of the budget request in, on the column on the left side, the 2025 department proposed, we started off with a department proposed revenue of 45.7 million, and department expenses projected, or proposed, of 47.8. And we can see, we, we started off 2025 at a $2 million deficit or a $2 million puzzle to solve. And throughout the process, revenues were increased 970,000 and expenses were reduced to 1.1 million to address that, and we now have a balanced budget in 2025 of 47.7 million. We do, in Apple Valley, we do a two-year budget. The second year, in the subsequent year, the prior year's second budget becomes the base for the, for the next year. So that explains why in this example, the problem to solve in the first year for 2025 is smaller because we solved part of that already the previous year. So in 2026, the department request was, included revenues of 48 million, expenses of 52 million, and through the process, we had to solve for 4.2 million. So we did, we did solve for that by either additional revenues and/or expenses. We are sitting with a, the second year budget is balanced. The action that the city council really takes this evening and in December is to adopt a one-year budget, but we do a two-year look just so we can see into the future on how, how the budget will be playing out in the coming year. Throughout the process, staff does seek outside revenue to mitigate any impacts. Some examples include- Some examples include, we heard earlier this evening, a number of park and rec grants that have been received just over the last year, year and a half. Redwood includes a playground, 1.4 million from the state, another half a million from the feds for that Redwood Park. The Mighty Ducks grant for the Hayes Arena, 207,000. A DNR grant for 250,000 for the Cobblestone Lake Trails totaling 2.3 million. Some federal grants, installation of a Level 2 electric vehicle charging station, 114,000. And recently, Safe Streets grant was awarded for 2, for 280,000 for the development of a plan for the safety action plan and supplementing safe routes to school. There's a number of stormwater grants that are either in process of being applied for and/or awarded. There's received awards of 488,500 from both the state and, and the watershed. The, they have a number of grants, 1.6 million, that are in the approval process. And then there's another 900,000 that they are working on applying for at this time. One of the things we need to, that will be coming into play this year is property valuations and the change of that for the coming year. Overall, property values are increasing 0.3%, so less than 1% increase in the property value. But we can see here, the first line is the residential and of course is the value of taxable market value of all residential properties in town is going down 0.58% for the coming year from 6.5 billion to 6.5, well, 6,470 million. Slight reduction there. We'll talk about part of what's driving that. Commercial industrial, we can see that they are increasing 10.8% for the coming year. Utilities is going up just over 2%. We do see a slight reduction in the apartment valuations coming for taxes payable 2025. I believe a, a good portion of that is related to tax appeals that have been working their way through the tax courts. And the county has settled some of those and have adjusted values going forward because of that. When there is a larger change in one property class, when the other one does not change or even goes down in this case, it'll shift the burden from the one class that isn't going up to the one that is going up more. For example, commercial is going up at 10.8% versus residential going down 0.58%. So that'll shift the burden, property tax burden, from the residential property class to the commercial property class. This is continuing a shift that occurred also in taxes payable 2024. Apartments declined for the coming year 1.4%, and that'll reverse part of the shift that they experienced last year. But there's always movement in all of the different pieces of the, in the variables in the property tax calculation. Overall, tax capacity, in a minute, we'll, we'll take a look at an example of how to calculate tax capacity. But this is basically the tax capacity overall of the city for new construction is going up 1.5%, which is positive news. A good chunk of that percentage-wise is in the commercial industrial. We are having, experiencing some tax capacity changes on the residential side as well. If we look at appreciation or evaluation changes without new construction, we can see that residential is going down 1.5%. That is, in this case, the majority of that is related to the change in the market value homestead exclusion program, which we'll cover in a moment. Commercial industrial, we can see the appreciation on existing commercial industrials up 6.3%. Utilities up 2.2%. And again, the apartment classification for tax capacity purposes, the appreciation or valuation decline 3.56%. Overall, overall, the preliminary tax capacity increases just under 1% citywide, both appreciation and new construction. So all of that is just under 1%, which two years ago, at last year, it was 5.77%. The year before that, it was double-digit. So this is showing a moderation of that valuation increases, which is a good sign for, I think, for everyone. The median value home for the coming year is going to be decreasing 0.9% from 362,100 to 358,700. And that's again for taxes payable 2025. And we'll take a look at what that means when we calculate a tax, tax bill. The market value, homestead market value exclusion program, I mentioned there's some changes happening in there. The, the exclusion for coming online, the change for 2025, the market value exclusion reduces the taxable market value of qualifying homestead properties. And the maximum exclusion is 40% of the value up to the maximum, up to the minimum threshold. And that maximum exclusion for the homes is changing from 76,000 for 2024 and pre-year, prior years, to 95,000. So you'll, they'll get a maximum exclusion of 40% up to that 95,000. And then, once they reach the 95,000, it begins to be phased out. And the phase out previously was 413,800, it's now 517,200. So we will see more homes that participate in the market value exclusion benefit program for the coming year. Again, 40% of the estimated market value is excluded up to the maximum value, which is achieved at 95,000. After 95,000, it's reduced by 9% of the value that exceeds 95,000 until it's totally phased out at 517,200. The market value homestead exclusion program, just a graphical image. You can see that of the, the value of the homes are on the horizontal axes. And then the, the max, the market value exclusion as a percent of the estimated market value starts out at 40%. Once it hits a 95,000, it starts to decline until it's fully phased out again at 517,200. The budget includes a number of different programs and, and funds. The total of all the budgeted funds is 106,718,000 on the expenditure side. The general fund is the largest operating fund that makes up 44% or approximately 46.7 million of the total budgeted expenses. Enterprise funds, which includes the water sewer, utility operations, stormwater utility, the liquor stores, all are included in the enterprise funds at 38,983,000, approximately 37%. And the road fund is a significant portion of the overall budget for the coming year. On the expenditure side, seven, just under 7.7 million or approximately 77% of the total budget is for the road fund. All other funds make up 12%, approximately 13 million. Of that is, one, one of the larger ones included in there is the future capital projects fund, which for the coming year is funding the $4 million of the police and fire station project that is going on to reduce reliance on debt issuance, as well as 1.6 million for the redoing of the parking lot here at the municipal center. For the total budget, the revenues that generate included in the budget is 98,936,000. We had expenditures that were exceeding the revenues. That is the city's investment in capital outlay, investment in improving buildings, infrastructure. And those costs are recovered in, over the future in user fees. The biggest portion of the, again, this is the, all, all funds for the total budget, user and franchise fees, 37 million. Again, this is the liquor store sales, the utilities, water sewer, stormwater utilities, ice arena, all make up the user and franchise fees. Taxes for the overall budgeted funds, 35,370,000, approximately 36%. Intergovernmental revenue makes up 8,133,000 in budgeted revenues. That includes the municipal state aid, support of, of our municipal state aid road system. So it's, in addition to that, we do receive some police and fire aid that is included in those revenue numbers. President Regical asked a question about LGA. The city of Apple Valley doesn't receive LGA, and Mr. Regical's aware of that. But the, the question really, I think, that, that he had was, what are we doing to promote the city of Apple Valley receiving that? And that is, it comes down to meeting and working with our elected state officials. The, I don't, I do have a slide in here, but I don't know exactly where to get to it. But I have a slide way back on the slide deck that breaks out the calculation for Eagan, Apple Valley, and Burnsville. And if we remember last year for taxes payable 2024, Burnsville hadn't, all three of those communities were not receiving LGA previously. And Burnsville began to receive LGA in 2024. When we look at the formula, there's a number of variables that make that up. But when we look at the formula, the difference between Burnsville, Eagan, and Apple Valley is the age of the housing stock and the age of the population. It's those two variables. Where the state gets the age of the population, I don't know that. But those are, those are the two variables in there. And why, I guess, Burnsville would be getting it and Apple Valley and Eagan do not. It comes down to those two variables, all the other variables that they use, which is about 10, were very similar between each of the communities. So in answer to John's question, we need to work with the state. You know, they, they review the formula every 10 years and they make tweaks to it. Every 10 years, they'll make a bigger tweak. But in, in the interim, they do make minor tweaks to the, to the formula. So, so we will have to work with our state reps on, on that program. License and permits, this is building permits, business licensing, 2,215,200 for the coming year. We got other revenues, fines, interest, everything else, 1.7. We are not issuing debt in the budgeted funds for the, for the coming year. And then there is transfers and admin fees between the general fund and the, some of the operating funds, or the operating utility funds. General fund, we saw that made a big portion of the, of the total budget. And this is what you would, what I would consider the general. When people think about general government operations, most of that is included within the general fund. And the general fund for 2025 is 46.7 million. And taxes is on the revenue side, makes up 75.6% of the operation, of the revenues for the general fund operations. All the others, kind of fees and charges, building permits, all of that, intergovernmental, all that is included in the other, other components. On the general, on the expense side, the city is a service provider, so you would expect that personal services, wages, benefits make up a big chunk of the budget. And in Apple Valley, that is the case, approximately 64% or 29.9 million is wages and benefits for the general government operations. Commodities, that would include everything from office supplies to motor fuels to minor equipment. And then capital outlay, this is capital outlay just within the general fund, but over 2 million for that. The predominant share of that is the charge to the general fund for the vehicle and equipment replacement fund. We use that to level out the capital outlay impacts to the, to the budget in the future. And again, we have a transfer to the road improvement fund, 4.4 million. Transfers to the municipal building fund, 545,000 through the coming year. The, on the expense side, again, the total, the budget is balanced, so the general fund expenses, 46,733,000, just like on the revenues. And this just represents all of the different departments in total expenses throughout, throughout the city. Just identifying some of the larger departments within there. Talk about the property tax levy, the general fund, again, biggest supporter of that, is the property tax levy. We'll, we'll break down the levy, the general operations. This includes the general fund levy, the transfers to the municipal building fund, all of that up in general operations. We've got a transfer from the, into the, from the general fund into the street maintenance program, 4.6 million for the coming year. An increase of 310,000, approximately 7% increase on the general operations. The levy impact of that is increasing 2.5 million, approximately 8.8%. Facilities, capital improvement, these are the bonds that we issued in 2021 and '22. And then we issued another series in 2024 for the first debt service payment is in 2025. So the total of those three bonds is increasing 700,000. That increase is, of course, the bonds that we just issued. That's a 73% increase in that levy, or portion of the levy. Park referendum bonds, of course, we had some older park referendum bonds, 1.1 million. We issued new ones just this past summer. And the debt service is going to be increasing to 2,389,000, increase of 1,1255,000, approximately 110%. Blend all that together, the increase in the total levy, 4,708,000, approximately 13.76%. Another way that we're, we can look at it is, what is the increase? You know, a large percentage increase in a smaller number, it isn't really the same across the board. So if we kind of boil it down, general operations of the 13.76% increase in the total levy, general operations makes up 7.23%. The street maintenance program makes up just under 0.9%. Facilities and park referendum bonds, between the two, 5.6 million, or 5.6%, sorry. And that gives us an idea of where the increase and the impact is coming from. Overall, the levy, let's call it the levy increase driver, is what is driving the levy increase? Levy increase, as I mentioned, 4.7 million, approximately 13.7%. Again, the issued 2024A bonds and the overall debt service on the facilities and the park, park referendum bonds going up, 1,958,000, approximately 5.6%. We have increased transfer to the road fund, 310,000, but we decreased the transfer into the facilities fund, 195,000. And then all of the other items we have in the 2025 budget, we had a, a reduction of revenues. We have, are experiencing reduced court fines or reduced cable franchise fees and cell tower rentals. Those reduction revenues cause pressure on the property tax levy. We also had increased salary and wages, including COLA and step increases, 1.2 million. Increased benefits, increased Medicare, FICA, PERA. There is two new positions that are supported by levy, and that's the IT person and a department assistant in park administration. Those are supported in the levy. Increase in contractual services and utilities, 340,000, along with increased, increase in capital outlay, 260,000. One of the things we do each year is we compare ourselves to similar-sized cities, our neighboring communities. This chart compares our total increase, of course, again, it's going up to 13.76%. And we can see that we are on the top end of this comparison. And what, I guess, what I say each year is behind every one of these numbers, there's a story. So we, we kind of have to keep that in mind, that we are towards the high end. This chart breaks out the, the impacts of the, of the debt, whether it's the facilities capital improvement bonds or the park bond debt increases. We back that out, it's just over 8% of the levy is going up for, other than debt, which if we, if we didn't have those debt, we would be right in the middle where we typically are each year at just over 8%. This, again, is a one-year snapshot and things change from year to year. This, again, is a one-year snapshot, and things change from year to year. If we look at, go back 10 years, and we look at similar sized cities, of the 10 years, and these are the actual levies reported to the state of Minnesota, so these are firm numbers, these do not include preliminary 2025 numbers, of course, because nobody's certified those yet. So over the past 10 years of these cities that we typically compare to, we are the third lowest over 10 years. If we do that over five years, we are, we, we increase to fifth lowest. And our change in that ranking is related to, we're issuing debt and we're spending capital outlay that may or may not be happening in the same, in this other cities we compare to. And then our ranking, this again was through 2022, should be expected to fall because of the recent bond issues in '21 and '22. Do that same comparison over 10 years of the larger cities within Dakota County. Apple Valley's increase, for average increase over that 10 years, 4.3% increase in the levy, second lowest of these cities. If we go back over five years, our ranking fell to fourth highest of those cities in the, in the major, larger cities within Dakota County. Again, the change from 10 years to five years. Within the past five years, we did issue a couple facilities capital improvement bonds, so that will impact the levy, of course, in that time period. We'll talk about the tax impacts to the median value home. We said the median value home for the coming year, 2025, is 358,700. We talked about the change in the homestead market value exclusion, so that home this year would receive a market value exclusion of 14,267, to be an increased market value exclusion reduction. But in this case, for 2025, they will result in a taxable market value of 344,433. It's that number times the state property classification rate for residential property under 500,000 is 1%. Gives you a tax capacity for that property of 3,3444. It's that number times our tax rate that gives us the gross taxes paid on a tax capacity basis of 1,435. We have, the old park bonds were based on the market value, so we add those in, and that's approximately $51 for the coming year, equals property taxes, again, for the city's portion of the tax bill for 2025, of 1,486. Do that same calculation and comparison between the two years, we can see that the, the tax capacity based levy is increasing $120 for, per year, $10 per month. Revenue referendum, market value based referendum bonds, that used to previously stay about the same. So the increase in total, $120 for the year, $10 per month, going from 1,366 to 1,486. Impact to the median value home going up about 8.81%. Another way to look at that tax, the tax impact, impact and breaking it down, we can see that general operations is going up $38 from 1,081 to 1,119. Approximately $38, increasing 3.54%. If we do the same calculation, what we did with the levy increase and showing how the 8.81% of the percent change in the impact of the median value home, we can see that the general operations is making up 2.8% of that. Street maintenance program is going up $4.62. The impact on the median value home is two, it's going up 2.4%, but the impact of the median value home is going up 0.34%. Facilities capital improvement bonds, again, we issued debt over the past year, so that increase coming, for the coming year, going up $27, or the impact, to the, share of the impact is 1.99%. Same with the park referendum bonds we just issued, going up approximately $50 on the median value home for the year, which is about 3.67. So of the 8.8% increase in the median value home, 2.8% is general operations, less than a half percent for the street maintenance program, just under 2% for the facilities, additional facilities capital improvement bonds, and 3.67% for the park referendum bonds for the coming year. Another way to look at it, I like to look at it, is the annual property tax bill. We do have, this lays out the different departments, and we can, we'll see that not all departments and activities are included here. One example would be building inspections, they're not, they don't make up a portion of the utility bill, or the annual property tax bill, because they have offsetting revenues that cover all of the expenses of that department. So again, the, the largest operation here is $418, which would fund the police operations, park and recreation, $181, Public Works, 163. And we go around the, around the pie chart here. The street maintenance program, we just saw, made up $196 of the annual tax bill. The park bond debt service. No, I changed this, and this, these two debt services are, are, are mixed, are switched around, so the park bonds is actually under dollars, the capital improvement bonds is the $70. That's probably about that. I'm not quite sure how that didn't make its way in there. Another comparison that we do is the, the taxes on the median value home in some comparable cities. These are, I only received eight other responses to my, to my survey of the, uh-oh. Way to go, Tim.
I didn't touch it. You got it back.
So this, this graph compares the taxes on the median value home in a number of different communities. For example, let's start with Edina. The, the median value home in Edina is 712,300. The tax rate in Edina is the 31.395%. Results in a tax on the median value home in Edina of 2,403. Do the same calculation of the median value home in each of the communities, and we can see our comparison in the tax impact of the city's portion of the taxes on each of those communities. And again, we're in the middle, at about 1,486 for the coming year. And again, we point out that does include the, the levy support of the road and infrastructure reconstruction. That isn't the case in all, all communities. We do annually a comparison of per capita governmental fund, governmental type expenditures per capita, and these are the same larger cities, metrowide, that we compare ourselves to. So 2022 is the most recent year that's available. We can see that Apple Valley's rank at that is third lowest in this comparison, at $957 per, per capita for that year 2022. Would do the same comparison for Dakota County cities, again, the same larger Dakota County cities. That same $957 per capita governmental fund type expenditures is a ranking of third lowest in, in Dakota County as well. The state of Minnesota, just with the changes in the valuations and the impacts that we're expecting, not just with Apple Valley's levy, but with the county, and is, just point out that there are a few different property tax refund programs. We'll, we do cover this again in the Truth and Taxation Budget Meeting in December. There is a homestead credit refund. The state haven't posted the amounts for 2024 yet, but it applies for maximum household income of 135,000 and a maximum refund of 3,310. And it's based on the portion that your property taxes exceed a certain percentage of your income, of course, you have to be classified as homestead property. There is a special property tax refund, and it's eligible, and there is no income restrictions on that. If the increase is more than 12% and that increase was at least $100, there is a refund that is eligible for the property owner. Maximum refund is $1,000. There's also a renters' property tax refund. That is based on homecoming, similar to the homestead credit refund, and maximum refund for that is $2,570. There is a senior citizen's property tax deferment. Now, this isn't a reduction, this is the state, if it exceeds a certain percentage of your income, the state and the property taxes are exceeding more than 3% of the net income. That portion that exceeds the 3% would become a deferred lien on the property, and it would be paid, it would just sit at the, be certified to the county. If, when the property is sold, that lien would be paid out of the proceeds at that time, so it could go on. And there is interest that does accumulate on that. There's a disabled veteran property exclusion. In addition to the market value exclusion, there's another one for disabled veterans that reduces the market value of home. There's a couple different exclusion levels, 150,000, 300,000, depending on disability status. And of course, there's requirements, you have to be discharged from the armed forces and then have a service-connected disability rating, 70% or more. This program is administered by the county. There is a disabled property owner classification as well, provides a reduced tax rate for homestead property. So again, that is administered by the county. Brings us to the timeline remaining. The action this evening would set a budget meeting date for December 12th, 2024. We're suggesting at the regularly scheduled city council meeting on December 12th. The county would send parcel-specific notices during the second, third weeks of November, notifying the property owners of the meeting date and time, but also of the tax impact for the coming year. The council would then hold the budget discussion on December 12th at 7:00 p.m. And then, following that, adopt a final budget and tax levy for payable 2025 on December 12th, with a backup date of December 26th. Also, both of those have regularly scheduled city council meeting dates. The action requested this evening is consideration of a resolution adopting the 2025 proposed budget property tax levy and a separate motion to set December 12th as the Truth and Taxation Budget Meeting at 7:00 p.m. So, with that.
Ron, take a breath, take a drink. Questions for Ron?
Questions, I'll have comments.
Do you want to start? You want to take a motion and then start? Take a motion and then jump to them, does that work?
Yeah.
All right. We'll take a motion to adopt the resolution for the 2025 proposed budget and property tax levy.
Show more. Second.
A motion and a second? Now, let's pause for comments. Councilmember Grendel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, my colleagues know that I have a concern about the increase in the levy this year. I'm going to vote yes tonight, but my anticipation is that we're going to continue to work to see if we can find savings in the levy. And, you know, we spent a lot of time on the median home value. What is this going to do to our businesses? And we need a friendly environment for our businesses. And their valuations are going up, what, 11%?
Just under.
Their taxes are going to be going up even higher than residential from last year.
That's correct.
Because of valuation. So we've never even talked about what this has done to our business community. So like I said, I'm voting for this tonight, but if we don't find some more ways to lower the levy, I will not be voting for it in December.
With, I'll just make a comment on the commercial valuations. At this point, we don't have the fiscal disparity number that we can apply to the commercial property, and that's frankly why I can't include.
And you can't get it yet, because you don't have all the, which you don't wish that's going to land yet.
We have, we have a couple elements of it, but we don't have it down to the parcel yet.
Yep.
That we usually don't get from the county until November.
Councilmember Goodwin.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things just to clarify for the public. We talk about this $10 a month for the median price valued home, which is 356,000. Now, my understanding that it's the median price, that's the house that's right in the middle.
That's correct. Half the houses would be valued less, half more.
So half the people in Apple Valley will be paying less than $10 a month.
Increase.
Increase. I'm sorry. I should have said.
It was like that, yes.
Clear on that.
Okay. Okay, $10 a month are less, or half the.
Yeah.
Now, for those of us like me, whose home is higher than the median value at home, I'll be paying more. But I just think it's important for people to know that half the people in this city will be paying less. Now, I've talked to some people in this town, and I said the median value is going to go up 10 bucks a month, and quite frankly, people have kind of just said, oh, really? That's what they say to me. I've talked to my neighbors, and my neighbors, because of my home, I, will be going up about $14.25 a month, according to the finance department. And I've talked to a few of my neighbors about that, and they say, hmm. Now, why do they say that? They say that because they read some of the same articles I've read in the paper about what's happening to Minneapolis and St. Paul. And so I don't see a real problem with, with how we're setting the levy tonight. But I'd also like to make a few comments. Mr. Retzegel made a comment about local government aids. I'd like to make a few comments about that. There are 800, I believe it's 56 counties or cities in the state. 90 of them do not get local government aid. Do I think that's fair? No, I do not think it's fair. I wish they changed the formula. Now, some of these poor little cities outstate that get LGA, I'm all, I'm all for that, that's fine. But there's, I'm just going to give you one example of a, I think, a city that's in good shape. Rochester, that gets a lot of LGA, they get $5.6 million a year of local government aid. Now, that's, if you look at the tax base, that's a pretty healthy city. Scott IBM, Mayo Clinic, all the enterprise around that. Does it make sense that Rochester should get $5.6 million and Apple Valley should get zero? No, it makes no sense. How do we change that? I've talked to our state representative about it, and he agrees with me that it's very unfair. If I talk, if you talk to your state representative, your state senator, I'm sure they'll tell you they agree with you, your citizen, that we should get some LGA. What are some of the problems with that? Oh, what do they say? 856 cities?
Yep.
90 don't get it? There's a lot of legislators that represent those cities. And most of the people that don't get it are the metro area and outstate, suburban metro. I shouldn't say that, because Minneapolis and St. Paul get a lot of LGA. But politically, it's just very difficult to change. I remember many, many, many years ago, this was after Governor Flannigan was no longer the governor, this is between the time that he was the governor and thinking of running for president, I ran into him at a chamber of commerce meeting, and I said, Tim. I can call him Tim because he was an Eagan council member when I was an Apple Valley council member. I said, did you really have to cut us totally out of the budget in 2006? Couldn't you have just cut it back, so with inflation, we would have got something? I never got an answer. But yeah, it's not right, John, Mr. Retzegel. It's not right that 90 cities don't get LGA. But if you're a little city outstate and you look at the quote, rich cities like Edina and Needen Prairie and Eagan and Apple Valley, there's just much, isn't much sympathy for it. And I'm sure our state legislators would love to change the law, but I just don't think they have numbers on their side. So that was the comment I had about LGA. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
There's an old saying, he who robs Peter to pay Paul will always have their support of Paul.
That's very good, Councilmember.
It is. So, while, while we're getting nothing out of this, the cities that are getting it are not going to be pleased about it. not going to be pleased about giving up a share of what they're already getting. So it's, it's, it's accurate argument, and there's no more unfair word in the language, in my opinion, than the word fair, because fair all depends on how you're looking at it. You know, the people are getting more think that's fair, the people are getting less think it's unfair. And it's, it's, it's a darn shame, but if you look at it as objectively as possible, you know, it, it doesn't seem right that cities, that councilmember Goodwin brought up, are getting a portion, and we're getting high, how are you? So the whole thing with taxes is, is a bearcat to work with, and I agree with Councilmember Grendel, to try to keep it as, keep the impact as minimal as possible. It's, it's tough, but as a citizen of Apple Valley, we get a lot of bang for our, our tax buck. And, and one of the things that, that I was brought up to speed on years ago was the, the street maintenance thing, which is a fairly substantial portion of our budget. On the other hand, an individual property owner does not have to pay when the street is rebuilt in front of his or her house, which I ran across this in, with my business head on a 40-foot frontage on a street in Minneapolis. They were assessed $16,000 bucks, not too long, that was several years ago. So the fact that we're not getting that, and a number of other cities are, has had quite a benefit for, for the citizens of Apple Valley, and it's, it's, we take it for granted, but a lot of cities, surprise, surprise, you open your mail, and, you know, there's a bill for a lot of money, so.
That, that was one of the discussions when we went down that path, is trying to take, make the, that burden more predictable, and that we're, we're still paying for it. Everybody is still paying for it. I don't think anybody's hiding that.
Can I just add to that one is, you know, we talked about business impact, and, and I would say nonprofits and churches as well, right? That, that assessment impact is often bigger on them than it is on the average homeowner, and so they're, they're saving as well, and, yeah, many of our neighboring cities, when the street gets improved in front of the church, that's scrambling to, right, they're not property taxed, but they're still stuck with the assessment, and so that does spread across all of those institutions.
Right.
John, anything to add?
No, we'll leave it till later.
The, just a couple, just a couple other things. We talked about LGA, the comment I hear periodically, especially people new to the state, is hey, you got a ton of retail, you must be raking in the sales tax, and, you know, that's another piece that we don't talk about in here, but, right, the state takes in the sales tax, and with the exception of a few recent additions, they get to reallocate that as they choose from the legislature level, and so, despite collecting a lot of sales taxes in Apple Valley, we don't get those back. So really, our source of revenue is effectively property tax for almost all things. It's me, this, there isn't anything I pay for that I don't want to pay less for, but you also have to figure out, do you get a value for that as well? And we made decisions on public safety, on roads and infrastructure, while everybody didn't show up to vote for the referendum, and those who did made a decision to spend $50 more a month, right, on, on parks in this case. And I guess those who didn't show up also made a choice to show up or not show up. And so to me, this is about choices, and we'll have a chance to make some more of them. If we have some chance to shave and move and adjust kind of going forward, we should absolutely figure out how to do that. At least we can know what this is, and we can start working toward getting those notices out and that kind of thing from here. So we had a motion and a second on this. Do you have any other discussion, Tom, before we call load?
Well, I was just saying, sometimes these statistics can, you have to be very careful with these statistics. Our assess, or our, our levy went up 13.76%. Sounds like a lot. Except if you ask the average, the median home owner in this community, your taxes went up 10 a month, they go, huh. You have to be very careful with this, these statistics, because 13.76 sounds like a lot. But from a practical point of view, when you look at it to the median value taxpayer, and more than half the taxpayers in the city, it's less than 10 a month.
Agreed.
So you have to be very careful with these kind of, I'm just saying that in case the newspaper is listening. Maybe they would point that out. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. So we had a motion and a second, and I didn't write them down, but I'm hoping our city clerk noted them earlier. So we had a motion and a second, all in favor of adopting the resolution for the 2025 proposed budget and property tax levy, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries, and we also need a motion to set December 12, 2024, as the Truth in Taxation Meeting at 7:00 p.m. Motion from Councilmember Bergman and a second from Councilmember Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries as well. Ron, to you, staff, and really all the staff, thanks for the time. This is a six-month-plus effort to get to tonight, so thank you. All right, let's move on. Staff and council communications. Tom, I know we had a couple items we wanted to make sure everybody was aware of.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two tonight. We have one regarding our Fall Cleanup Day and one regarding our Food Truck Festival. So let's call on Charles to start us off.
Evening, Mayor and members. 'Tis the season to get the budget levy presentation and then the Cleanup Day presentation. So just a reminder to our folks that the Cleanup Day will be Saturday, September 21st. It's the Family Aquatic Center parking lot, which is just off of Johnny Cake Ridge Road. We open at 8:00 a.m. and we will close pretty promptly at 1:00 p.m. The event is for non-hazardous materials, things like appliances, tires, scrap metal, furniture, remodeling debris, and then we also do paper shredding. And there are fees that apply to most of those, not the shredding, but most of the other things. We encourage people to check our website for the prices. We do not accept hazardous waste, so things like electronics, paints, cleaners, pesticides, fluorescent bulbs, those things have to go to the recycling zone up in Eagan. And a couple, couple pieces of information, we just try to stress for folks every, every year, once the longest line of day is always at 8:00 a.m. Typically, we have a line literally out to Johnny Cake, and that takes us a little while to get through, probably 20, 30 minutes. So we say, feel free to sleep in, you do not need to be there at 8:00. Most other lines, the rest of the day, are extremely short. We try to get most people through in less than five minutes. The shredding, just for the public's information, is in the parking lot that's right off of Johnny Cake at the top of the hill. So they do not need to drive down and get in line with everybody else who's dropping off the construction debris and everything else. They can just stay at the top of the hill and go right to the shredding truck and take care of the shredding. So I think that's, that's all, but people can check our website for more information, and we'll see them on the 21st.
Thanks, Charles. I will grab in here the last couple of years, and you're in and out as quick as there is people to help unload, right? You, it's, it's quick and easy, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
And Eric, let's talk about the fall food, or the food, the Fall Food Truck Festival. That's what I want to say.
There it is. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just want to make sure that we invite everyone in the community to come out on Saturday. It looks like the weather forecast is going to be pretty decent, maybe a little bit overcast, so it won't be too hot, but Saturday, September 14th, at Kelly Park, from noon to 6:00, there'll be live music, food trucks, and a lot of fun. We have a great partner in the Apple Valley Arts Foundation, going to be sponsoring the band, so grab some friends, grab your family, come out, and enjoy some Fall Food Truck Festival at Kelly Park.
Thank you. We look forward to it. Anything else, Tom? Councilmembers, anything? Just, we're here at the middle of September. I'll just add that September 10th, we had a hose uncoupling, a ribbon cutting at the new fire station. It was great to have there, it was great to see not only our current firefighters show up, but also a number of our retirees, including, were we up to four retired chiefs, maybe wandered around the parking lot somewhere, somewhere in that ballpark? So, so it was great to see them, great to see them all there, and just, you know, how appropriate to do that on the, the 10th, the day before the remembrance of September 11th. And so nice to have a good thing to celebrate as we remember that, but also just a good time to remember the job done and the sacrifices made that day. So worth celebrating, worth remembering. Any other comments, council? If not, we will approve the calendar of upcoming events, and our next regular city council meeting is Thursday, September 26th at 7:00 p.m. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved. Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendel and a second from Councilmember Bergman, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendel and a second from Councilmember Melander, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.